Let us pray together. O loving and wise God, we thank you for the promise of your presence with us here this evening. We thank you for your many blessings, abundant blessings upon us. We thank you for a measure of health that you give to us to fulfill our callings, and ways that you sustain us, and even for relationships that you build among us to make us better people. Thank you for the ability we have to be involved for useful work, the privilege we have to respond to important responsibilities that each of us have. Thank you for the freedom that we have to meet here this evening. Thank you even for the freedom that we have to embrace you or to reject you, and for your grace, your amazing grace that you offer no matter where we are in our expressions of faith. And we pray that this evening you would grant wisdom to our leaders, to our affected elected officials, that you would also give compassion and caring to the citizens of our fair city, that we would leave apathy at the door. We pray for a keen thirst of justice and rightness and confidence for what is good and fitting. We pray for the ability to work together in harmony, even when there's honest disagreement. We pray that we would be the ones who would set an example of civic pride and interest. We even pray for personal peace for each one of us and joy in our lives. And also, we pray for the agenda set before us this evening, oh God, and for the assurance that we would make decisions that would honor you and that also would benefit the citizens of Muskegon. We pray, dear God, in your most holy and blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Garren.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
All here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary of request: To approve the minutes of the April 28, 2015 City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of minutes. Item B, McGrath Community Building Replacement Tables and Chairs, Department of Public Works. Summary of request: To authorize staff to purchase tables and chairs for the McGrath Park Community Building for a total price of $9,918 from Kendrick Stationers, who submitted the lowest responsible bid. The tables are called Indestructible II, 1,200 Commercial Series. Their request is for eight, sorry, 12 eight-foot tables, 96 rough-and-ready folding chairs, along with a table and chair cart. Kendrick Stationers out of Sturgis, Michigan, is the company offering the entire requested package. They are also specifying date of delivery with a two-hour window period and will deliver direct to the community building. Staff recommendation: To authorize staff to purchase 12 tables and 96 chairs and a table and chair cart from Kendrick Stationers. Item C, new special event request: The Burning Foot Beer Festival at Pier Marquette Park on August 29, 2015, from Community and Economic Development. Summary of request: Michael Brower and the Lake Shore Brewers Guild Incorporated have submitted a special event application for a new event to be held at Pier Marquette Park on Saturday, August 29, 2015. The festival will highlight craft breweries and local artists with beer tasting, food vendors, art, and live music from 3 o'clock to 9 o'clock P.M. They are seeking City Commission approval to serve alcohol at Pier Marquette Park for the event. The beer vendor tables will be arranged in a circle on the beach just south of the boardwalk and concession stand. The festivities taking place within the circle, see the attached map for location. Beer will be served in five-ounce sample cups. They will have security personnel checking IDs. Staff recommendation: Approval of the request. Item D, application for permit for fireworks, City Clerk. Summary of request: Muskegon Lake Shore Chamber of Commerce Foundation is requesting approval of a pyrotechnics display permit for July 4, 2015, Heritage Landing. Fire Marshal Metcalf has reviewed the request and recommends approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of this insurance. Staff recommendation: Approval contingent on inspection of the fireworks and approval of the insurance. Item E, Business Improvement District Resolution to Increase Number of Board Members, Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: The Business Improvement District was established by the City Commission on March 10, 2015. The initial board members met and a recommendation was made to add two new board members. Also, one of the members was unable to serve. This is a request to add Mike Hennessy from Hennessy's Pub in Borzbelly and John Riegler from The Cheese Lady, and to replace Amanda Garabadine from First General Credit Union with Connie Taylor. Staff recommendation: To approve the resolution and authorize the mayor and clerk's signatures. Committee recommendation: The bid board recommended approval. Item F, Request to revoke the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate at 441 West Western Avenue from Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: PCJ Enterprise LLC was approved for an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate on May 11, 2004, for their property at 441 West Western Avenue. The certificate was approved for 12 years, expiring December 30, 2016. The new owners of the building would like to apply for a commercial facilities exemption certificate as part of their planned renovations, but need to revoke the Oprah certificate before they can be granted the new abatement. The Oprah may be revoked because the original applicants did not proceed in good faith with the operation of the facility. Staff recommendation: To revoke the obsolete property rehab certificate. Item G, Third Quarter 2014 and 15 Budget Forecast from Finance. Summary of request: At this time, staff is transmitting the third quarter 2014-15 budget reforecast, which outlines proposed changes to the budget that have come about as a result of changes in revenue projections, policy priorities, labor contracts, updated economic conditions, or other factors. Staff recommendation: Approval. Item H, Acceptance of Terrace Point Circle and the Extension of Terrace Point Drive within the Terrace Point Landing Site condominium plat from engineering. Summary of request: Adopt the resolution, accepting the reference streets into the city's street system, even though they are not in complete compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance regarding radii and tangent requirements. Staff is relying heavily on the recommendation by designer, design engineer, and traffic engineer, both of whom recommended acceptance. Staff recommendation: Adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner German?
Uh, J, I mean, excuse me, G and H.
Which one that was?
G as in German and uh, H as in hat.
Okay, any others? Not? Mr. Johnson?
I move to accept the consent agenda as read, minus items G as in German, H as in hat.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by the Vice Mayor to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items G and H. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Thank you. Item G, Commissioner German?
Okay, I move for the recommendations of approval for the third quarter 2014-15 budget reforecast finance.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to accept the outlined proposed changes to the budget for 2014-2015 reforecast. Commissioner?
Yes, okay, actually, on this, I'd just like to get a little bit more detail than about this budget forecast. I kinda looked at it and just want, you know, Mrs. Smith could just kinda shed some light over.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With this reforecast, we've made a number of adjustments, if you will, because of new information or changes in revised estimates and so forth, and also by a number of departments going back and revisiting previous estimates being provided. What we've done overall is we've been able to, for this third quarter now, bring overall the general fund back into breakeven, actually, a slight surplus for the current fiscal year projections as opposed to at the end of last quarter, we were at a deficit position. So, general fund revenues have been reforecasted to be $83,220 higher than what was reforecast as of the second quarter. Some of the most significant changes include increasing the projections for property tax revenues by $102,000, an increase in income tax penalty interest by $20,000. But there have been some other items that have been offset that are projected decreases now for revenues. Civil infractions have decreased by $15,000 projected. Court fines and fees have decreased by $10,000. And also, we reduced projected operating transfer from the Public Improvement Fund of $176,000. We eliminated that because that project is not gonna be done this current fiscal year. But we also were able to increase income taxes by $180,000 projected for this current fiscal year. And on the expense side, we made a few adjustments as well, where the estimated expenditures for the third quarter general fund are estimated to be $46,224 lower than the second quarter reforecast expenditures for the general fund. And some of the more significant changes from the second quarter include projected decrease in police department expenditures of $107,000. And, but offsetting that is projected increase in fire department projected expenditures of $108,448, as well as the central fire station projected increase in expenses by $15,000. We were able to save some money in fire safety inspections, contractual services, by revising that expense down by $149,000 for this year, and parks maintenance down by $25,463. So those are some of the highlights, if you will, some of the more significant changes that we were able to make this quarter compared to the previous quarter.
Okay, which is real good, and it looks real good. Good job. Yeah, I just wanted you to just kinda, you know, give me more insight on that, but yeah, I'm very impressed.
So we've had a lot of departments that have really chipped in, if you will, to look for ways to either reduce expenditures or find opportunities, if you will, to bring up our revenues, try to balance the budget.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Derek. Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, just one comment, again, compliments to staff. You know, we were looking at a deficit heading into the fiscal year, and it looks like we'll finish it pretty clean, and that's not easy to do. But also, we need to keep in mind that this budget is reflecting a disinvestment in our infrastructure. And so while it's balanced as far as cash flow, we're actually in a fairly significant deficit when you consider what we need to be investing in our streets primarily, but our other public infrastructures that are our responsibility as well. And just so as anybody who's watching tonight, please understand that, you know, we're in budget balance, but there ought to be a lot of streets that we're repairing that currently we don't have the cash flow to do. So hopefully, either the state can come up with a Plan B or, you know, we can figure out some way at the local level to take care of those infrastructure needs that are currently being unbalanced. Thank you, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Well, if we're lucky, I just see that the Michigan Senate is skipping their summer break to search for road funding solutions, so.
Oh, good.
So we'll be at the beach and they won't. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I adopt the resolution for the acceptance of the Terrace Point Circle and extension of the Terrace Point Drive within the Terrace Point Landing Site condominium plat.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the Vice Mayor to adopt the resolution of acceptance of Terrace Point Circle and the extension of Terrace Point Drive within Terrace Point Landing Site condominium plat. Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Muhammad, I know yesterday in the work session, we talked about this, and I kinda struggled with the noncompliance of the ordinance and, you know, exactly, you know, how it would affect, I guess, the situation dealing with that being in noncompliance. Also, you know, approving something like this, what type of precedent would we set? Also, when it comes to accepting something like this, and we know that it's not in compliance. So I guess, you know, I'm looking at the liability of it, and you can kinda touch more on what you feel from your expertise.
Well, thank you for, good evening to all of you, first of all. And thank you for pulling this item because there's one, I mean, in light of the discussion that took place yesterday, I think staff has been able, you know, having some discussion with the city manager and with the developer, I think we have come up with some assurances that could help, or some steps that could help us ensure that this continues to be a safe street and not waste a lot of money or time and expedite the acceptance of those streets into the city system so we can get going, if you will, with the development. And thus, I'm asking you to make this approval, if you so desire or choose, to make it conditional upon a couple things. One, the installation of all the signs that the traffic engineer has recommended, which would help us offset some of what I believe shortcomings, if you will, in compliance as far as the tangents and radiis. With the low traffics, with the low traffic volumes that are anticipated out there, I'm comfortable with it at this time. And also, to make the approval conditional upon the three-year warranty that I believe the developer has accepted, if I remember correctly, and I'm looking at Frank, at that time. So with those two conditions, I believe we are offsetting whatever shortcomings from compliance with the ordinance are anticipated. And I do not anticipate much of any problems if those two items are adopted.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we amend the motion to make it contingent upon the installation of the signs recommended by the traffic engineer and contingent on the three-year warranty.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga to amend the adoption of the resolution contingent on the signage being placed as recommended by the traffic engineer and the placement of a three-year warranty.
If I made a three-year warranty for underground utilities, so we're.
Okay, three-year warranty for?
I'm sure that's what I said.
I heard it. Underground utilities.
Yes.
Where do we go from there? Will you vote on that one?
Well, discussion, but then you vote on the amendment, on the underlying motion.
Right, okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay.
Did he give any support on that?
He was asking of you. Is there support for it?
Yeah, oh, I still support it.
Any support? The underground utilities?
I do.
Great.
I think we should have some.
Okay. Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any additional on the underlying motion?
It's real exciting to see construction started already, so let's hope that's the first of many.
Okay. Roll call on the underlying, please.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, John. And have you given any more thought to allowing me to just live there in the model as, you know, give it that human element until it's sold? Okay.
That means no.
That was pretty elegant, yeah.
Public hearings, please.
Establishment of a Commercial Rehabilitation District, 435 and 441 West Western Avenue from Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: Pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978, as amended, Pigeon Hill Brewing Company has requested the establishment of a commercial redevelopment district. The creation of the district will allow the building owner to apply for a commercial facilities exemption certificate, which will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. Staff recommendation: Establishment of the Commercial Redevelopment District.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have three of these requests for the commercial facilities exemption certificates tonight. In order to, before we can approve those, we have to establish the districts first, so that's what this request is for, and then I can go into the details of the next one next.
Very good. As this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public that wish to address this issue? Vice Mayor?
Seeing no one, I would move that we close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Redevelopment District for 435 and 441 West Western Avenue.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Redevelopment District for 435 and 441 West Western Avenue. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we have item B, please, under public hearings.
Issuance of a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate for Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC from Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: Pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978, as amended, Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC has requested the issuance of a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate. The certificate will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The company will be investing $500,000 in the building and will create 10 new jobs, which qualifies them for an abatement of 12 years. Staff recommendation: Issuance of the Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate.
Thank you.
All right, this is for an expansion for Pigeon Hill Brewing. They will be adding a canning system to their operations. They also have plans for a tasting room and a beer garden at this location. And we do have Joel Camp here from Pigeon Hill. Do you have any questions?
Public questions, yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hood.
Yeah, I had a question for the Pigeon Hill Brewery piece.
Joel, if we could just have your name and address, just for the record.
Joel Camp, 38, 23, Harper Breeze. Had to remember, I just moved into the house.
Very good. Ready for a grilling? Good, here we go.
My question is, I noticed that you say you'll be creating 10 new jobs, and I was just wondering, are you an equal opportunity employer?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Anybody.
Anybody?
Well, they gotta be qualified to do the work that we need to, but, yeah, equal opportunity, doesn't really matter.
Okay, what's the qualification on the work that you do?
Um, it would just have to have, it depends on the position. Mainly, in this location, we're gonna have brewing positions for brewing and packaging, so we'll have to be able to lift, you know, like 50 pounds is generally what we'll have to require to work in a production area.
Okay.
Any other questions for Joel? Byron?
In that building, you have both distribution and retail?
Yes, first, we're gonna start with the distribution portion, which is gonna be the back part of the building with use of the loading dock and the tall ceilings. We're reserving the front part of the building for future retail.
Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
As this is a public hearing, members of the public are invited to input in this matter, if you so please. If not, Commissioner Johnson?
Seeing none, I move to issue a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate to 435 and 441 West Western Avenue.
And close the public hearing.
Oh, and close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson and seconded by the Vice Mayor to close the public hearing and issue a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate to Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC. Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Good luck. You got it. Item C, please.
Establishment of Commercial Rehabilitation District at 896 Jefferson Street from Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: Pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978, as amended, 896 Jefferson LLC has requested the establishment of a Commercial Redevelopment District. The creation of the district will allow the building owner to apply for a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate, which will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. Staff recommendation: Establishment of the Commercial Redevelopment District.
Mike?
This is also to establish the district. This is for the former Kent Optical Building. Their plans are to rehab for office space up top and to have a salon sort of incubator-type business where they'll have individual spaces for salon stylists to run out. And this is for the district, and the next will be for the certificate.
Good. Questions, Commissioners? If not, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this issue? Commissioner German?
Excuse me, did I hear you say the old, the old Kent?
Kent Optical.
Kent Optical, okay, okay, all right, thank you. Just trying to figure out where that was at.
Jefferson and Webster.
Okay.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Seeing no questions from the public, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
And establish the district.
And establish the district? And establish the district?
And establish the district.
And who seconded it? Commissioner Hood. It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Redevelopment District for 896 Jefferson Street. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsama-Sibenga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, please.
Issuance of a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate for 896 Jefferson LLC from Planning and Economic Development. Summary of request: Pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978, as amended, 896 Jefferson LLC has requested the issuance of a Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate. The certificate will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The company will be investing over $359,000 in the building and will create 60 new jobs, which qualifies them for an abatement of 12 years. Staff recommendation: Issuance of the Commercial Facilities Exemption Certificate.
C leads to D.
Yep, we have Chris Nass, who's representing the company here tonight, if you have any questions for him and the project.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, 60 jobs, that's a great thing, and I'm happy that all three of these requests are gonna fill up empty buildings that haven't been used. Are they the, like, businesses within themselves? Is that the operator that does the work? And I know as you have a large.
In regards to the salon, 896 Jefferson building?
Yes, if you could just come on up, give your name and address, and then we can have it in the record.
Hi, I'm Chris Nass, 2411 Lake Avenue. In regards to 896 Jefferson. In regards to 896 Jefferson, yeah, the Kent Optical building that we had purchased, we are converting that into suites, where a stylist who is now leasing a chair on a weekly basis could actually lease a suite, so they would have their own little business and set their own hours. So that's what we're gonna be offering there. So they would be able to supply with their own product, you know, they'll have their own established clientele, and they could work their own set hours. They wouldn't be required to, you know, work an established salon's hours.
So they're not employed by a manager or someone of the building?
No, they're all self-employed.
Self-employed, do their own thing.
Yes, they're gonna be leasing that suite on a weekly basis, as they would a chair in another salon.
And I notice you have an area set aside for huge wedding parties that have the whole thing done at the same time.
Exactly. Now it's gonna be upstairs, so, 'cause I know there's been talk, we've had talk about developing the basement and leaving the upstairs as office, and we've been back and forth. It's looking right now that we're gonna develop the whole building as salon suites. So, yeah, upstairs will be a larger room that classes could be performed, as well as wedding parties in large groups, can be done at one time. And then we also will have a nail staff in addition to all the stylists there on site.
Any other questions from Commissioner Nass?
Excuse me, you say 60 jobs, and that's part of the 60 jobs that you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that number was a little incorrect, to be honest with you, 'cause if you look back at some of the other paper, further back, it talks about 22 jobs. That's probably more appropriate, and it could fluctuate depending on if there's gonna be assistants in there in regards to large wedding parties, but I could really see a normal 22.
22.
Employees there, if it's fully used. The reason why it would go up to possibly 60 is we've been talking to some other entities here in town about renting the upstairs, and that would, if that was the case, that would jump that up, because they would have that one large area, about 2,300 square feet open, and they would subdivide it into cubicles, and they would bring in 20 to 30 employees up there in that upper level.
Okay. One more question, excuse me there. Is this something that you already have in existence, that you're establishing more or less like a franchise, or do you have other locations?
No, no, we're looking at things that do exist presently in larger cities, so there is a model that we're going from, so, but there's nothing that we're aware that, you know, Grand Rapids are here.
Right, okay.
Like this at this point in time. But we get out and about and talk to the stylists that rent chairs here locally and talk to them about the idea and bounce that. Before we even got this far, we have talked to them, and we've got a great response, you know, from these people that would like that idea, that they would have that available to them, where they could have their own business.
All right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hood?
You said you talked to a lot of stylists in the area?
Yeah, anybody that's out and about, yes, we stopped in, yes.
Okay, so that would mean that you talked to minority stylists also?
Oh, yes, yeah, we're open, yeah, it's gonna be open to everybody, yes. Our plan is, is once we get the lower level developed, we're gonna do a large open house, where everybody, you know, we'll do an announcement in the paper and inviting anybody who has any interest to come and view the facility. Okay. And, yeah, it'll be open to anybody, yes.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga.
So the number of jobs in the packet was different than what was stated now, so does that impact the terms of the abatement at all?
Mike's gonna...
Whether they have 22 or 60, they would still qualify for the same amount. It's a standard six-year exemption, and we give additional years based on either employment or the amount of money invested, and the threshold for the additional six years is $125,000 in investment, and this goes well beyond that, so they would still be eligible for the 12 years.
Okay, thank you. Just Mr. Hood.
You say that you would be charging what's similar to a booth rental. Do you have any idea from what range?
Our numbers right now that we have come up with is about 155 a week, and that's what the average is after talking to, that's about basically two colors. Two colors a week will cover the cost of their suite.
When you say a suite, you mean that they'll have their own?
Four walls.
Four walls.
Four walls, yes. And the way it's gonna work is, there's gonna be, it's gonna be a security entry. There's gonna be a main door that they can walk into kind of a lobby area. They can buzz their stylist, and their stylist, you know, there's gonna be a camera there, can see them in the lobby and buzz them into the main facility.
Sounds nice.
So, that's how we're gonna do that.
Commissioner Turnquist.
So they're self-employed, but there must be like a manager, an assistant manager, booking the booth, someone in the building?
No, we're gonna be leasing, yes, and it'll be my job to lease it. C Can Management will manage the building. So I'll have, I'm sure I'll have a cleaning crew that will, you know, be in there to clean it, because there'll be bathrooms, you know, there'll be public bathrooms, but they're gonna be for the patrons.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you, Mr. Nass.
You're welcome.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this issue? Could I have you take the podium and just give your name and address, please?
Cindy Ackerman, 1408 Lakeshore Court. I was just wondering, out of the $359,000 that was gonna be invested, whether that included investing on the interior and the exterior? Just wondering.
No, everything will be inside. We've looked at the exterior at this point in time, and it's in good shape. I am gonna probably do some painting of it, but there won't be any, you know, real renovations, tearing it down to the old brick facade that's under there, so...
Okay, but freshening up and cleaning up?
Yes.
Very good. All right?
I'm Pastor Anthony Hall from Greater Delivers Abbot St. Faith Church. I guess my question is, you say you reached out to the minority group, and my thing is, how do you plan to get everyone involved again, not just from one side, but from both sides, so everyone have an equal opportunity?
Are you speaking to this particular?
To this particular, yeah, the hair salon.
We'll do a public announcement, that we'll have an open house for all stylists. I don't know if we'll do multiples or at least one, that anybody will be invited for this, to come down and walk through and see the building once it's done, and then obviously we'll... I'm not totally familiar, I know we have some examples in regards to applicants and lease forms and everything like that. I don't know, I haven't put one fully together, but I'm sure they will be there on site for anybody that has interest and want to proceed with that.
Okay. Very good.
I just wanted to say, I think it would be a good investment to have an inclusive business with different ethnic backgrounds, you know, in that business to diversify it. It sends a lot, you know, says a lot with you as a business person, and also the structure of the business that you will have in there, so I think it's a good idea, and good luck to your business.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, I would move that we close the public hearing and issue the commercial facilities exemption certificate for 12 years for 896 Jefferson.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinsumasabiga, to close the public hearing and issue the commercial facilities exemption certificate to 896 Jefferson LLC. Discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, please.
Establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district at 165 West Clay, Planning and Economic Development. Summer of request pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978 as amended. 165 Clay LLC has requested the establishment of a commercial redevelopment district. The creation of the district will allow the building owner to apply for a commercial facilities exemption certificate, which will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. Staff recommendation, establishment of the commercial redevelopment district.
Still here, Mike?
Yes, I am. This one is just right around the corner, at the former Lori's Leading Lady Clothing Store on Clay. Will be redeveloped into a bar and restaurant with an apartment on top, and Mr. Nass is also representing this project as well.
Very good. Any questions on this one, gentlemen? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on 165 West Clay? Not? Commissioner Rinsumasabiga?
I move we close the public hearing and adopt the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district at 165 West Clay.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsumasabiga, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to close the public hearing and establish the commercial redevelopment district for 165 West Clay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, please.
Issuance of a commercial facilities exemption certificate at 165 West Clay Avenue for Planning and Economic Development. Summer of request pursuant to Public Act 255 of 1978 as amended. 165 Clay LLC has requested the issuance of a commercial facilities exemption certificate. The certificate will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The company will be investing over $336,000 in the building and will create 26 new jobs, which qualifies them for an abatement of 12 years. Staff recommendation, issuance of the commercial facilities exemption certificate.
And E left, leads to F, right? Any questions, Commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Well, just to get kind of an idea here, I mean, is there a tenant lined up? I mean, some of us are old enough to remember Uncle Ron's fondly.
And some of us are even old enough to remember Hicks' cartwheel hammer down the block.
Well, that was on the other end of the block.
Right. Mr. Nass?
Yes.
Can you draw a picture for us?
Well, at this building, no, we don't have anybody in mind, you know, we were tossing around some ideas, but what I think, how we're gonna proceed with this is, you know, put a hood system in and kind of build it out, and just kind of see what people find us or seek us out with it. I don't think that we're gonna establish the restaurant per se, I think we're gonna find an entity or a person that's gonna wanna come in, as we did with Top Shelf and Pigeon Hill with the Noble Building. It was gonna be something that we're gonna kind of build out, create a white box, and have somebody else come in and take it the next step.
So if somebody was interested in pursuing that, who would they contact?
They would contact me.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga?
Just to clarify about the number of jobs, does 26 sound about right for this location?
Well, it's gonna, yeah, I would say on the off-season, because this building, we see that it's got a really large courtyard in the back, so we see that it even going up for the summer months, because we see that there'll be outside entertainment during that. So, we see that, yeah, on average, 26, but I could see it bumping it up to 40 in the summer months.
Anything else, gentlemen? Commissioner?
So you're preparing this building for this business, but you have not found a person yet interested in doing that business in this building?
Exactly. But we've talked to people who have interest, but it's one of those things that people would like to see it kind of first, you know, some people can't really envision it. My envision for this thing is, we've got a spare hood system already that we didn't use for the Noble Building, so we have half the equipment already. We're gonna put, I see it kind of a centerpiece, a different style restaurant, where the actual kitchen is the centerpiece of it, and things are built around that. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, if it's gonna be, you know, we've heard people talk that they want an upper-end steakhouse like Lakos used to be downtown, some people, you know, prefer ethnic, so we're gonna be open to anything, so we're entertaining anybody at this point.
So you're shopping while you're developing it?
Exactly, yes.
Anything else? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this issue? Even though I know you, why don't you go ahead and write your name and your address?
Jonathan Seifert, Downtown Director for Muskegon, 380 West Western. White box space is one of the issues that we have downtown, we don't have a lot of that. I do have people who approach me fairly regularly about whether it's office, retail, or restaurant space downtown, so something like this is needed, so I would encourage the commission to take that into consideration, and this would be a good plan, so.
Thanks for the input. Is there anyone else? If not, I get a motion. Commissioner Johnson?
I move to close the public hearing and issue a commercial facilities exemption certificate to 165 West... 165 Clay LLC. Support?
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, supported by Commissioner Rinsumasabiga, to close the public hearing and issue a commercial facilities exemption certificate to 165 West Clay LLC. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Thanks for the investment.
Concurrent with the Housing Board of Appeals notice in order to demolish 318 West Larch Avenue and 1328 Spring Street from public safety. Summer of request, this is to request that the City Commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals, that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they need to be demolished within 30 days, or infraction tickets may be issued. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute contracts for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 318 West Larch Avenue? Is there anyone here to speak on 1328 Spring Street? Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals notice in order to demolish 318 West Larch Avenue and 1328 Spring Street.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals notice in order to demolish the following, 318 West Larch Avenue, 1328 Spring Street. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinsumasabiga.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garren.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Yes.
Commissioner German.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other business to bring before the body? At this time, open to public comment. Mr. Denny, you've put in a request to address the commission regarding, I believe, a property at 407 Marquette. Mr. Denny, you've put in a request to address the commission regarding, I believe, a property at 407 Marquette. Come on down. I just need your name and address, Perry.
My name is Perry Denny. My address is 1700 Superior Street. I also use a P O Box, 1784 at the post office as well. I'm the CEO of the Linda Denny Malone Community Center that happens to own the building at 407 Marquette, on the corner of Wood and Marquette. Everybody knows that old great grocery store possibly, is what the discussion is about. I guess my concern is that last November with that horrible cold storm we had, that it deteriorated some of the rear wall, and I've been discussing that with the chief and other members of his department about the building, and I'm aware the community is concerned about this building. In process of talking to the chief again about how we're going to proceed with either demolishing the building or possibly rehabbing the building. We purchased this building because we have a lot of concerns with, well, one of the things is, I'm also on two boards in the neighborhoods on that side of town, as I'll call it, the north side of town. We typically have a poor meeting place down at Smith Rierson, and we have future plans with this organization that I oversee to expand on that corner. So, again, I just wanted to let the commission know that we are aware of the concern. Again, when we purchased the building, we knew it was an old building, and our goal was is to at least be able to function out of the building, and somehow that kind of got sidetracked, but we are also aware that the building has deteriorated even worse. So, again, what I'll do is, through the night, I can email you some things. I've got all your emails. I actually have talked to some of you about the future plans we have, so you kind of know me already about where I'm headed with this. But I just wanted to let you know that we are aware of it, and I also wanted to get your thoughts, so I can answer your questions, so you're probably aware of it as well, so.
Very good. So, you're in the process, staff is evaluating the situation with you, and Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I certainly want to encourage anybody who's got positive programming, particularly for youth in this community, the concern with that building, and I drive by it every day, I mean, let's be honest, the back wall's collapsed.
Yes, it has.
And open to the elements, and it's getting progressively worse. So, a decision needs to be made soon because at this point, it's not secure. It's not really able to be secured because of the size of the collapse in that back wall. And my concern is that a neighborhood kid, being curious like any normal kid would be, might be in there when there is further collapse and might be facing potential injury. So, you know, I'm glad that you're working with the chief and the Housing Board of Appeals, but some resolution needs to come fairly soon with this building because it really is a hazard right now because of its physical condition. It's not a cosmetic thing like some of these situations are. There's some serious structural damage with that building. And like I said, I drive by it every day, and I've been watching the hole in the back get bigger as the springs progress.
And this is currently going through the dangerous building process?
I wanted to catch a commission up on where this is. In our May meeting for the Housing Board of Appeals, the building moved back into the process and was declared by the Housing Board of Appeals. I think that's what prompted Mr. Denny to come here today. Give you a quick history of the building back sometime, 2010, 2011, whatever. The building actually had gone to the commission and was ordered to be demolished. Obviously, due to funds and the state of the economy, we didn't get there. When we got, received complaints back in the fall about the building starting to collapse, it went back on the radar. We had consulted with our city attorney, who advised us that we could not go ahead with the demolition. We should start over in the process, to be fair to the owner, Mr. Denny. That's how it went back through the process, notifications were done. We had to duplicate our work, that was our fault, you know, the city staff. So, we started it again, and now it's back through Housing Board of Appeals. Mr. Denny testified at that hearing, and after the testimony from both staff and Mr. Denny, he was ordered to go to the commission, and you'll see it come up in June, just so you're not surprised, because it is moving forward, and you'll see it probably at your second meeting in June for the commission to make a determination. We are working with Mr. Denny. We told him that, you know, you can still contact Hope, you still can contact Kirk up in the building, pull the permit or whatever, but at this point, we're starting over again, and the process is moving forth based on the condition that Mr. Commissioner Spataro brought up, the fact the building is collapsing on the south side, and there's a gaping hole in it right now.
So, at this juncture, we have to follow the process. It's within, you know, the dangerous building or the Board of Appeals at this juncture. So, we'll have to follow the process at this juncture to find resolution, you know, either before, comes before us, or?
That is correct, but I just want you to know that unless something turns around the next 30 days or so, it's going to be at the commission and, you know, as we follow the procedure.
Okay, so, it's in the process. All right, thank you, Perry, and best of luck in the next 30 days.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Denny. That wall that had collapsed in the back of the building, is that something that can actually just be torn down and removed? Is it actually going into the building itself?
It is a, it is part of the structure, and I guess by understanding, I'm not an expert on buildings, but I've owned houses and buildings before, but when you get something that allows the elements in, a wall, a roof, whatever it may be, basement, you've got to have it way as secure. And again, like I say, the building was aged. I remember seeing it when I was a kid riding a bicycle back in the 60s. Well, I know the problems with that building, but the wall, for your answer, can be replaced if that's what the building, I'll say safe build, allows. So, you know, we're looking at costs here, you know, I don't know what it's going to cost to tear the whole building down, to demolish it. You know, we're looking at a substantial amount of cost, whoever pays for it. So, I guess my thing is, I'm trying to be practical, work with the city, all the departments, and let's solve the problem, so as the chief always says affectionately, let's find a win. And that's what my goal is here today. I just wanted to let you as the, you know, the City Commission as a whole know that we're concerned about this more than you are. Because that's what we're about here. We have some high standards also. So, again, I just want to let you know that I am involved in this with the city and so as well, so.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hood?
It's, um, so I take it that money is the issue of either repair or demolishing the building?
Yeah, I think it is with everybody. You know, this has been bounced around a few times, so it seems like money comes up in a lot of cases with everybody. So, I think that's the question at hand. One of my ideas, and I was going to bounce that off, bouncing off the chief, is that, you know, if we're a nonprofit, maybe we can come up and work with a couple of the organizations and come up with a plan to maybe not do one building, but maybe two or three. He's brought that to some of the meetings before, that that's what they've done. And so, again, yeah, you're right, funding is an issue. I think, again, that's what we ran into here before when it was told, I was told it was going to be demolished, so.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, I share Commissioner Spataro's concern about the easy access to the inside of the building, and that's when bad things can happen. Is that the only access to the building? I drove by there today, and that's what I saw. Rest of it seems pretty secure, or are there other ways to get in that building?
Well, there's other doors, because, yeah, there were doors, let's say, you know, exit doors were on the inside, there were doors, if there ever was a circumstance like any commercial building, let's say, a fire. So, yeah, there are probably six or seven doors on that whole building. It has a pretty-
But they're not, are they locked?
Yes, the doors are locked. I actually put screws in them.
I'm just wondering if there's a temporary two-by-four framing thing to block out the hole. The hole's on the side of the building.
Yeah. I'm glad you-
As, you know, the process is going to take a while, and I'd like to see it secure, that young people aren't getting in there.
Right. Well, not necessarily young, but I think the thing that I might could do temporarily, and again, I'll get with the chief and, you know, Kirk, I'll say, and maybe we can put a wall up, some type of fencing or something. I posted signs, I put down a caution tape. Again, like I said, that was in January, so it was a little difficult to go back in late concrete, if that may be the case. But this point, I would think that might be suitable to put some type of fencing up, six, eight-foot fencing.
Yeah, if that's appropriate with inspections, again, I went around there today. You must be cutting the grass because there's no debris or garbage outside of the building.
That's correct.
Right from the front side, you know, you can see that it's abandoned, but it's not like some of the buildings we see.
Exactly, yeah. We do maintain the property. I have actually four different properties in the city, so they do get maintained, and if there's an issue, we probably do our best to solve the problem.
Thank you, Perry. But as the chief has indicated, though, it's in the process, it will be coming before us. So, we have to consider the, you know, the realities of that, and, you know, ultimately, this is the second go-around on this property. We may be indicating to Perry that in order to forestall the demolition, that going to court, you know, would probably be the next step in that because, you know, the building is in a horrific, you know, state at this point, and it is, it is in the process, and the process is moving forward. So, be prepared. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission on any issue? If not, I'd, oh, sir!
You just have to wait a minute.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is George M. Bennett Jr., and I am here with, I work for Muskegon Family Care, and I am the Assistant Community Service Outreach Person at Muskegon Family Care, and Pastor Hall is the director, and he has a plan that, for a 5K run, that would be on July the 18th, and it would start at Muskegon Family Care, but we wanted to carry it into the Muskegon area. But we've found some, there are some resistance because of the route that he wants to take, and so we've come to find out what would be an adequate route for the 5K run, and he's here to address the council.
The, what we need to have done is go through the process of putting him for a special events permit, and that would be through the Planning Department.
Okay.
Okay. And, is she right with Kathy? Yeah, she's here?
Yeah.
Okay. And our director, Kathy Brubaker-Clark, is actually in the audience right back there.
Okay.
But if you could start at the starting point, the starting point, as far as a special event, then hopefully we could, you know, help you work out the plan.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you very much.
You bet, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address the commission? If not, Commissioner Hood?
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Any in opposition? No? Okay, goodbye.